...meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. We welcome each one of you here tonight for the conducting of the county's business. I think we have a pretty good idea of what has drawn such a large crowd tonight, and we want to deal with that in order tonight. We do have rules for public comment period, and I will address that, our attorney will in just a few moments, but we welcome you and remind you that we are on YouTube tonight and being streamed live, and we welcome all of those that are joining us tonight on Facebook or YouTube. I got it right in my mouth. We are being streamed live on Facebook and YouTube, and we do have several speakers tonight. We do have rules for engagement, rules for public speaking. We have an agenda to conduct, and we're going to try to get all that done tonight. It's going to take a while, I'm sure, and we'll try to move through that process with your help as we do that tonight. But we welcome each one of you here. It is a part of the process that we have to go through as a county, and we're trying to work through that in the best way that we can. We've all had a number of phone calls and lengthy messages with individuals, and we thank you for those calls. And again, it is a big matter, and we'll try to deal with that appropriately as we move forward. So, welcome. I want you to please stand, those of you that are able, remove your caps. We'll have our pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight is by Chaplain Bill Hatfield from the Randolph County Sheriff's Department. Is Bill here? Michael, will you come and do our invocation? Thank you, Mike.
Can we pray? Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, we thank you for all of your goodness. God, we magnify you for your mercies and for your grace. You are the God of our wisdom; you're the God of our grace. Your word says that we could come boldly to the throne of grace that would attain mercy and find grace to help us in time of need. And God, there are so many here tonight that are looking for answers, that are looking for direction. We ask you, Spirit of the living God, to allow your wisdom to dictate the course of this meeting tonight. We pray, God, that you would govern every heart in the name of Jesus. God, we speak your blessings and wisdoms upon these county commissioners. Lord God, I pray that you would lead them, that you would guide them into all truth. We know that you're able, God, to do exceeding abundantly above anything that we ask or think. There's nothing impossible to you, and tonight we need you to settle in this place. God, grant us your wisdom and your grace in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It is, it is time for our public comment period, which we always do at the start, and in consideration of all those who have signed up and for those of you that are here to hear the conversation, hear the questions, hear some responses. Talking with our attorney, we usually have 15 minutes that we set aside for a public comment, and no more than three minutes for any individual presenter. And with what, those that are already signed up, that would take considerable time just to get started. We do have a short agenda tonight. We only have about four or five items on here. So, what I want to do for the public comment period is ask anyone who's here for a reason other than the reevaluation process. If you have a comment, then I'm going to have our finance officer, Will Massey, to make a presentation on what, how this process goes about, what has transpired to this point in time. After we get through with our agenda, we will be here for as long as it takes to address those that have signed up for public comments tonight. And I think that's about as fair as we can be with this and still conduct the business, the folks that have come to handle that, to do that tonight. And as I said, we'll move through that process. There's nothing that's really controversial. It's pretty much just routine things that we have to take care of in the order of business tonight, and all the commissioners are aware of that, and we'll move through that process at that time. So, we'll, maybe we'll wait for that so it's fresh on everyone's mind. Is there anyone here tonight on the public comment you want to read?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll read our rules of procedure for the public comment period. If I understand you correctly, we're going to take those individuals who want to speak about anything other than the reevaluation first. So, the rules of procedure for the public comment period are, the public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name, both orally and in writing, before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation. It's my understanding that we have 23...
Actually, 19.
Excuse me, 19 individuals that are, that are signed up.
All right. Who is here to speak tonight on an issue other than the reevaluation?
Mr. Chairman, I'm out of here. My, I signed up, but I defer my bladder to another day. Take my name off the list.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pew. Come forward.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what did you say?
He asked that his name be removed.
What did you say?
I thanked him.
You were there.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Josh Britton. I'm a Cub Scout PAC master, assistant baseball coach, and Randolph County resident since 2017. Proud Randolph County Kool-Aid drinker. I'm here to speak on the statue tonight. I found it interesting that in research, our namesake Peyton Randolph, the namesake for our county, was first cousins with Thomas Jefferson. He's considered by many to be a founding father. He co-wrote the playbook of democracy, which we benefit from tonight. And in ironic twist of fate, his great-grandson, James Ennis Randolph, was a Confederate officer, and he's most remembered for his song or poem, "I'm a Good Old Rebel," which I'd like to read an excerpt from tonight. It says, "I'm a good old rebel, now that's just what I am. For this fair land of freedom, I do not care a..." "I'm glad I fought against it. I only wish we'd won, and I don't want no pardon for anything I've done. I hate the Constitution, this great republic too. I hate the Yankee Nation and everything they do. I hate the Declaration of Independence too. I hate this glorious Union. It's dripping with our blood. I hate the star-stripped banner. I fought it all I could. I can't take my musket and fight on 'em no more, but I ain't gonna love 'em. Now that's for certain, sure. And I don't want no pardon for what I was and am. I won't be reconstructed. I don't care a blank." Now, my question is, when were we reconstructed? I won't be reconstructed. I don't think that's ever happened. It didn't happen when people resisted the full rights of former slaves. It didn't happen when that anti-reconstruction mindset fueled the Wilmington riots where a publicly-elected government was overthrown by guerrilla terrorists. We weren't reconstructed when we had Jim Crow laws, and I don't believe we were reconstructed when the statue was erected out front. But it's not too late to be reconstructed. We have a statue out front today. It's a sentinel for sedition, a vanguard for resistance, and it's standing between the street and this seat of government. There was a fence that was put up recently, and there's no fence that can hide the shame of treason. A boy who would take up arms against his government, and I invite us today to be reconstructed. And I invite you to consider the question, which Randolph County are we? Are we Peyton's Randolph County, the one who extolled the virtues of liberty and justice for all? Or are we James Ennis's Randolph County, bitter, hateful, unreconstructed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before the meeting began, I asked the chairman how much was paid for that fence around the Confederate statue. That statue is now a POW. It is a prisoner of war. That fence cost the taxpayers $37,000 for all the things that need to be done in this county, and you spend $37,000 for a fence to make him a POW.
My name is Doug Nixon. I've been a lifelong resident of Staley for 43 years. My grandparents moved to Staley in 1947. My parents moved here in 1974. Our community has always been a friendly, family-based area that mostly keeps to herself. But however, Staley is also known for a community that will come together when the need arises to protect our life, our community, and our farmland. Recently, a property owner has told citizens that he intends to sell his land to a developer who wants to build a rock quarry. The developer is offering a premium price per acre to this landowner and possibly to adjoining landowners. After hearing about the proposed quarry, a very large group of citizens, of local citizens turned out on December the 1st, 2022, for a community meeting to voice their concerns about a quarry being open in our area. After that meeting, a large group of us decided to form Save Our Staley LLC. I was voted chairman, and Laura was voted vice chairman. We started fundraising as soon as we could to fight this quarry. This quarry will benefit no one except for the landowners who sell their property and the person who builds this quarry. Since most quarries have only a handful of employees, it will not provide a lot of jobs to the area. The harmful dust will carry for miles away, and will impact our air quality on our livestock, pets, farmers, and citizens with breathing problems. The noise from the blasting at the quarry will also be disruptive to the community. The blasting could also affect our groundwater in a negative way. Property values near and around this site will decrease so dramatically our residents will not be able to sell their property and will possibly have to abandon their homes. Our roads will suffer much damage from the large number of trucks in and out of the facility and leave, and leave the site daily. Brown's Crossroads cannot handle the increased traffic from more trucks. A large number of these trucks already speed down this road daily, possibly endangering our citizens. Recently, when I was taking my son to school, an 18-wheeler had came through and a carload of teens had to run off the highway because that truck was already on their side. It could have ended tragically, but they were responsive in their actions. I have personally met with the developers of the mega-site and have conversations, have had conversations with Wolf Speed, David Griffin Jr., and attorney Tim Boris, the landowners of the Chatham Advanced Manufacturing Mega Site that is located approximately one and a half miles from this proposed quarry. They are strictly against any quarry in the area and will interfere with any of the precise manufacturing of their silicon carbide wafers. Wolf Speed did not invest $5 billion into a site that will be disrupted by daily explosions from a rock quarry. However, the most important reason we do not want this quarry is because we cannot afford to lose our drinking water, period.
Mr. Nixon, that's your time, sir.
I've just got two sentences if I can run out. Every residence, farm, church, industry, and restaurant rely on our water in the Staley community. We have at least 50 chicken houses within 50 mile, or excuse me, five miles of the site. A well-known and well-loved seafood restaurant, the best in the state in my opinion, is right across from this proposed quarry.
Okay. Thank you.
We understand that growth happens, and we know that there hasn't been a petition yet for this, but we just wanted to introduce ourselves to you to let you know we're keeping an eye and keeping an ear on things.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Mike Brinkley. I've been around Randolph County about all my life. Now, here's what I'm here about, this tax assessment stuff.
Now, let me interrupt you there. Sure. So, like, like I, like I said, and the chairman said at the beginning, we're going to reserve anybody who wants to talk about those and lump those together. So, right now, we're only taking people for the public comment who are going to talk about anything other than the reassessment, okay? We're going to, we're going to, we're going to come back to that. We're going to give you the opportunity to talk, but not at this point.
Did you sign up? I know you came in a little late. Did you sign up?
Daryl, this is the first time there's been one of these things. I didn't really want to come here.
See one of the ladies over there.
That's okay. That's okay. You're among, you're among friends.
You're all right.
You're among friends. Sign up, and we'll get to it in just a few minutes.
All right. Is there anyone else here not related to the revouch?
We have one person at the, or two, three?
Good evening. I appreciate this time. This petition is brought to the governing bodies of Randolph County before the Board of Commissioners, and we also plan to take it...
Ma'am, can you please state your, can you please state your name?
I'm sorry. Margie Staley. I live 133 Cedar Run Drive in Randleman.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Staley.
We're bringing this before the Commissioners. Also, we plan to take it to the Planning Board because of the Cedar Run development in Randleman and the surrounding communities in Randolph County to express our concern and request the county act as better stewards of our community. We request the governing bodies substantially lower the number of approving zoning changes for mobile homes and permits that allow the influx of Class A, double, and single-wide mobile homes in northern Randolph County. This has had an adverse effect on surrounding property values, water levels, generated tax revenues, as well as created an unesthetic appearance in our community of northern part of Randolph County. It is the goal of the petition to protect the property value in north Randolph County. It is common knowledge, mobile homes depreciate in value and quality at a higher rate than stick-built homes and are more likely to become deserted and ice-sores. Despite this, Randolph County has one of the highest percentages of occupied mobile homes in the state, 21.3% versus the 12.4% of North Carolina State. The development of mega-site will potentially have an economic impact on the northern section. Planning and zoning will be an integral part of bringing the type of housing that will be on demand for the caliber of employees at these mega-sites. We feel those are not Class A, double, and single mobile homes. If we are not mindful, we will lose this growth to Greensboro and east of the mega-site. Lastly, it is vital to our community to make it aesthetically appealing, which will encourage people to come to our county. Currently, it is not. There must be ordinances to be put in place that this be done to govern the outward appearance of rental properties, including mobile homes and places of business, especially junkyards. During the period of growth, we must be mindful of the effects of our water source and continue to protect the crucial and protected watersheds. And I have brochures that I'd like to give you.
Just please hand those to the clerk. She'll, she'll give them out.
Thank you, Ms. Staley. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Clyde Faust, and I'm here today, I'm a resident of Randolph County, born here, and I'm here today to talk to you about the monument. We are full tonight of people who have a disagreement or have, who see a problem in Randolph County, and they have come to their county commissioners for a resolution. And we're doing the same thing when it comes to the monument. These individuals that you see behind me have folders with them. They have evidence with them to explain why they feel there's a problem that needs to be changed. We have brought forth that same evidence, and we want, well, we have also brought forth evidence over the course of the last year on why we feel the monument needs to be moved. It's not an emotional issue, it's a factual issue. The proof is, or the truth is, that the legislators, not individuals, but the legislative bodies of the states that started the, that started the Civil War or seceded from the United States, Florida, Georgia, Mississippi, Louisiana, Texas, and South Carolina, all put in writing their desire to expand and preserve slavery. Georgia said the principal reason why they were, succeeding from the United States was the preservation of slavery. Put aside what those legislators said, look right here in Randolph County. In Randolph County, where our citizens were shot in the head for refusing to join the Confederacy, we can document at least 14 individuals who were shot and executed, not by Union soldiers, but by Confederate soldiers because they refused to join. We can document Randolph County women who were abused because they wouldn't tell the Confederates where their family members were hiding out in the woods. And on top of that, we can document in the building right across the street, thousands of individuals who were enslaved right here in Randolph County. We come as a community with information to our county government because we need there to be a change. When you put that monument, or allow that monument, to stand in front of where we have to come to, to talk to you, that is not equality. That is not treating neighbors the same. If you know the truth, we must tell all of our neighbors the truth, and then we must try to correct mistakes that were made in the past. We have never asked for the monument to be destroyed, but in all fairness, there is no conscientious way that we can justify leaving it right where it is. It is an insult to those individuals from Randolph County who were executed for refusing to join, and it's an insult, an abomination to the, to the memories of those Randolph County citizens who were enslaved by a process that Confederates were willing to kill Americans in order to keep.
Mr. Faust, that's your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Guys, guys, come on. If, if there's, we are all Randolph County citizens here. There's no need to, to boo anyone. If you want to, if you want to clap, we, we don't need to boo, to boo anyone. That's, we're, we're not silencing anybody's opinions or ideas here. Who's next?
Good evening. My name's Ken Rhodes. I live on Stony Creek Drive in Ashboro. You may remember I addressed the committee, the council, last December about the burning at the 47 acres of Browish Chapel Road. I've been in communications with the developer, and just to make you aware, today, a little after 4:00, Raleigh issued a burn restriction on open burning, of which the fires have been going in the, in that land now for three days. And I did send a text to Donald Lanier advising him of the, the burn restriction from Raleigh, and the fire marshal knows about it. That's all I really want to bring forward to you tonight, is that I think he'll do the responsible thing. He's been open and communicating. I'm hoping he'll do the responsible thing, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
We will make sure Hal can follow up with the fire marshal, see what, what we can do there. Anyone else other than revouch?
My name is Fay Holt, and I'll be very blunt. I'm a citizen of Randolph County, but I live in 24-hour hell Toyota. You can't sleep at night. It's been 14 months since I've had any kind of sleep at all. Lights, noise, banging and clanging. They don't have blasts. They have explosions that rattle the neighbors' houses and windows. And our whales, I don't even, I'm even scared to think about that. They drive in the middle of the road. My husband was run off the road, and he was on his side of the road, on his tractor, by a Red Ames truck. I myself, more than one time, had been run off the road because they were driving in the middle of the road. Big equipment haulers coming right at you. Don't slow down. They don't even try to get over. And speeding, it's just ridiculous. My neighbor with her two children was run off by one of those big tire trucks. Y'all don't know what I'm talking about, but they're huge. It, it just goes on and on. It's just ridiculous of what we, we are having to put up with. And as far as Julian Fire Department, my daddy helped money to, gave money to help start that, and I myself worked, baked cells and stuff to start Julian Fire Department. And I am so proud of, over the decades, the men and women that have done their best to protect us and take care of us. But now it seems to me like it's going to be Toyota Fire Department in Julian. And I'm not going to get started on the tax, because all y'all, Deborah Hill, we were told that our tax will not go up because of the mega-site. Now, I know the taxes is going to go up, but we, at 50%, we getting hit bad. Oh, I'm southern, I'm rebel, and I'm male.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move forward now with our business tonight. First is our consent agenda. Is there any item on there that any commissioner would like to have pulled out and dealt with separately? Or I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas presented in the agenda packet.
Thank you. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Dow. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is approved. First business item is the medical assisted therapy MAT program for the Randolph County Detention Center. Andre Asleton with the Sheriff's Department is here tonight, our chief deputy.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, for your time. We want to ask for a budget amendment. The Sheriff's Office would like to request $95,736 to assist in facilitating a medicated, medication-assisted treatment program. This is the use of medications in combination with counseling and behavioral therapies, which is effective in the treatment of opioid use disorders and can help some people to sustain recovery. Funding would provide the service of two MAT nurses to assist in administering the program. These services would provide the assistance needed to conduct the program appropriately, and you can refer to Exhibit A on Page 4 for further details about this. We've also, we've also prepared a PowerPoint presentation. Do you have that, Will? Perfect. And we have Nurse Michelle. So, I have Nurse Michelle Honig. She is our registered nurse at the, at the detention center. She has been an intricate part in planning this program and how it would be administered. So, she'll walk us through the, the presentation. Michelle?
Hi. So, I've been at Randolph County Detention Center since 2019. I moved down here, and they've been like family to me, and I have seen the same inmates coming in and out of that jail, and their health and the addiction in this county has gotten so much worse than when I first started in 2019. These people look like they are deteriorating, and there's not enough services available for them, and we really want to try and help them better their lives and get out of this circle that they're in. So, this is what the program's about. So, this, I can't read the numbers. This is the assessment of need. So, it's the statistics from the Randolph County Detention Center for the year 2022. We used, we use a computer system in medical called Spillman, which links, or called Core, which links to Spillman, the jail system, and this is how many intakes were brought to the jail, which is, I'm sorry, I can't read the numbers. It's too small. I don't have my glasses. All right. 4,233 intakes. That's how many inmates were brought into the jail. And then 1,830 of those were seen to go under opioid withdrawal. And then 556 of them were seen to go through alcohol withdrawal.
That's the way they were presented?
Yes. Yeah. That's the, and these numbers, because we have a high rate of recidivism, these individuals, they leave jail, they'll be gone for a couple of days, and they come right back. they leave jail, they'll be gone for a couple of days, and they come right back, and it's the same cycle. The next slide is from the month of November 2021 to January of 2023. And you can see the steep increase in how many inmates we have seen suffering from opioids. In January, we had two hundred and sixty-three that required withdrawal monitoring. And that was male and females were one hundred and twenty-eight. And then we also, the program will also assist alcohol use disorder. A lot of times, the alcoholics that we see that come into jail, they're there on petty charges like trespassing because they were drunk in public and wandered somewhere. And we would really like to get them help as well, so that program does encompass that. The next slide was statistics that we got from North Carolina Department of Adult Corrections, probation and parole for seventy-six Randolph County. So you can see in 2020 opposed to 2022 that the amount of positive drug tests have significantly increased. And I lost my spot. The amount of legal drugs such as Suboxone and Methadone, which is used for opioid use disorder, is miniscule. Only thirty-four of these individuals in 2022 tested positive for that, opposed to two thousand, one hundred and thirty-four for illicit drug use. The overdoses with Randolph County, so these are two line graphs. The first one shows the total amount of overdoses. So in 2022, we had seven hundred and eighty-five, and eighty-three of those were fatal. We went back and looked through the call system for Randolph County, and a majority of these overdoses were formerly incarcerated individuals. So these are just some facts. Randolph County is the eleventh largest county in North Carolina with the nineteenth highest population in the state. Our opioid epidemic epidemic in this county has been rising steadily with an estimated twelve point seven three percent of people suffering from opioid use disorder and residents over the age of twelve, which is estimated to be fifteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three residents. In the past year, eighteen point two percent of these individuals have requested for substance abuse and addictions assistance. From twelve twenty to twelve thirty-one, there were thirty-five calls noted in Spillman related to an overdose. When reviewing the calls, it is noted that the majority of these individuals who overdosed were incarcerated at Randolph County Detention Center at some point in time. For the month of January two thousand, twenty twenty-three, the number of addiction recoveries courses offered on the tablets completed by inmates was four thousand, one hundred and sixty-five. So these individuals do want assistance, they just don't know how to get it. Drug overdose is the leading cause of death after release from incarceration. Within the first two weeks of release, the risk of death from drug overdose is twelve point seven times higher than the general population. So our goal is to reduce the number of overdoses in our county within this population. It's to reduce the rate of recidivism that we see within the Randolph County jail within this population. It's to decrease the rate of crime within our county, and it's to increase the well-being and health of these individuals suffering from opioid use disorder. So the program will be provided by Medico. This is the current medical provider at Randolph County Jail. It uses policies and procedures created adhering to the ADA, so the American Disabilities Act, SAMSHA guidelines utilizing FDA-approved medications. It will include all inmates, new and current inmates, suffering from opioid use disorder and alcohol use disorder. This program has already been established in another jail. Its biggest success has been Arlington County, Virginia, and it was reviewed personally by the ADA and found to have virtually no faults. The medication that we plan to use, which is all FDA-approved, is Suboxone. So Suboxone is a tablet which works by blocking the receptors in the brain that crave opioids. These work without activating these receptors to create a high. So these individuals are not able to obtain a high from using this medication. Blocking opioid receptors stops the brain from sending signals that cause withdrawal symptoms and cravings for opioids. This is the most cost-effective medication that's available, approved by FDA for opioid use disorder. Subucelaid is a monthly injection, which is a derivative of Suboxone. It works the same way without the risk of diversion, so they can't spread it amongst the jail if they wanted to. It can only be started after individuals have been maintained on Suboxone, though, and it is the most expensive one of the medications. Vivitrol is a monthly injection, which can prevent relapses into alcohol or drug abuse. It can prevent relapse and opioid dependence by working by binding to opioid receptors in the brain for up to one month's duration. It can only be used on individuals, though, who have been opioid-free for a specific amount of time. And there is lots of resources out there for when they get released to continue Vivitrol, where they have a zero copay deduction. I found lots of coupons that we can get to them if they have no health insurance. Multi-strategies that we plan to use. So MAT is not successful with medications alone. You can't just give somebody medicine. They need counseling for success. And with this program, targeted drug therapy will be given to the inmates through QMP, which is a qualified mental health professional. He actually has a background working in the jail. He has gotten certification in drug rehabilitation counseling and has a master's degree in master's degree in mental health counseling. He's been with us so far, and he's been great, and he's ready and excited to receive additional training and therapies through Medico to start this position or new role. Outpatient services must be given to these individuals to ensure success post-release. The jail and I have had multiple interactions with Brightview. It's an outpatient treatment center, and they have wrote a letter of commitment ready to start with us when we begin the program. Monitoring and the assessment of these individuals' health will also be performed. The MAT program will allot for more staffing within the medical department, such as additional hours for the provider. The two MAT RNs, who will directly work with these individuals to ensure well-being, health, and ancillary services that might be needed to keep them healthy. So Medico has a couple of policies that I thought were great towards the MAT program. We state that we will provide medically managed treatment to patients with substance use disorder and those who are at risk for withdrawal. Withdrawal management will be done under the supervision of the medical director in accordance with local, state, and federal laws. Medico will develop and implement individualized treatment plan with multidisciplinary treatment teams that include medical, mental health, and substance abuse professionals. All individuals with suspected opioid use disorder will be screened for mental health disorders, especially trauma-related disorders, and offered evidence-based treatment for both disorders if appropriate. So there's a lot of stigmatism that goes with MAT and opioid use disorder. So some of the myths is that medication-assisted treatment substitutes one substance for another and that addiction medications are a crutch that prevents true recovery. So some of the facts that have been found is that when properly prescribed, MAT stabilizes brain chemistries, reduces drug cravings, and prevents relapse, blocks euphoric effects from opioids, and normalizes body functions. Recovery is more than just abstinence from chemicals. It can be defined as a process of change through which individuals improve their health, wellness, and live self-directed lives to strive and reach their full potential. And then this is just the breakdown of our plan. So we have goals set up, measures for success, and then the timeline on here was just a rough estimate. So our goals, like I said, is to secure this program, hire the staff, and then train the staff about the program. That includes medical staff as well as the jail personnel. Our other goal is to reduction opioid-related overdoses. We're going to offer all active incarcerated inmates. The MAT program provides drug-targeted rehabilitation, warm handoff to outside treatment centers, and Narcan instructions to try and in case there is relapse, to limit fatal fatal overdoses. And then we also have measures to determine success with that. We want to increase their health and well-being. Blood work diagnostic testings might have to be performed. We do that already in-house. Community resources, information, we plan to utilize NC Care 360. And we already provide modules on the tablets for continuing education, parenting classes, as well as drug programs on there as well. So our major goals, again, is to decrease recidivism rate. If these individuals can get the help that they need, our crime rate might decrease. We might have less people incarcerated, and they might be able to live healthy, productive lives. And that is the end.
Thank you, Nurse Michelle.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Nurse Michelle?
On the, is this, you're asking for three months in this that's remaining in this year, and then then twelve months? Is that, are we going to reevaluate, or is this continuing?
So we had originally planned to start this in July, but the need, we can't wait till July. There's just a tremendous need for it. So talking with Medico and working with Michelle, they have put a plan together. We could start it sooner if the funding is there and have promised that they can get this off the ground and running by April first. Luckily, Medico already has several of these parts of this plan in place with the mental health treatment and the counselors. So they already have part of this program that is in place that we won't have to get those additional services through another provider because Medico is already providing them at the jail. So the main thing are the two nurses and, of course, getting the doctor who can actually prescribe these medications. And we have to have those nurses because of the way the program has to be administered. The inmates have to be under close supervision for a certain period of time, and they have to be drug-tested, and they have to know about the poly substance abuse. There's just a whole plan there. But yes, originally, it was planned to start on July, but prepared to start in April with the thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, but I'm I'm just asking, is it a fifteen-month, and then we're going to reevaluate? That's what the money's for.
No. So all we're asking for right now is the funding for April through June because our Medico contract comes up for renewal July first. And so our July first renewal will hopefully include Medico.
Twelve more months.
Correct.
Okay, that was what I wanted to know.
I apologize.
That's what I wanted to know.
If I could just say, given Stan's interest in the opioid crisis that we're facing going back years, I've tried to learn, you know, all that I could about it. And I was first introduced to the the MAT treatment, I guess, about a couple of years ago. And I remember calling Philip Cheek and saying, are we using this at the Detention Center because it's being, you know, used at several other places? It's been very successful. There's a lot of research behind it. And I've talked to a couple of people, you know, through Zoom conferences that we had that have been treated and been able to go through withdrawal and to be, you know, live successful, productive lives off of opioids because of it. And are we doing that here? And he said, no. We he didn't know anything about it. So I am, I am really glad that that we are going this, you know, looking at going this direction. I think it would make your jobs easier, and I think it has the potential to to help a lot of people, so. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Other comments or questions?
Regarding the funding, I'm on the Sand Hills Board of Directors. Have they have they been approached as far as funding?
We have contacted them. There are some funds that are available through Sand Hill Center through June thirtieth. We have been in contact with them about doing some reimbursement if we're able to get the program. So yes, we have. In addition to that, we're looking at some grant funding through the opioid settlement funding, and also they're working on another grant through the Department of Justice. Hopefully, we could find enough grant funding to reimburse the county for all of the expenses. But our main concern right now is just trying to help these people.
And opioid, that was my second question with opioid funds that might be available. Have we looked at that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I know it's.
One, a thirty-day supply for Suboxone for one individual is eleven dollars and forty-two cents through our pharmacy.
Would with Medicaid expansion, would that help?
Yes.
Cover some of this cost when it goes into effect?
Tremendously. There is, if we could get insurance for these guys, Medicaid covers the cost for the majority of these meds. I think it's up to sixty-two percent. So especially in the more expensive medication, it would be extremely helpful.
So the ask of ours is to approve funding for the April, May, and June months. And that would be, according to our finance officer, funded through appropriation of sales taxes, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. Other questions, or is there a motion?
Ms. Chairman, clarify that amount. You just, excuse me, you just said, I didn't hear that number.
The Medicaid question.
The Medicaid, oh, so if we were able to get our inmates Medicaid, Medicaid covers up to sixty-two percent a lot of times of the medication, yes. I was, I was looking into Vivitrol, and it said sixty-two percent can be covered up to by Medicaid, but that's not an option right now for us.
I think that's two years away, Medicaid. All right. Most pleasure, the board.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to approve the Medico contract amendment and the associated budget amendment.
Commissioner Allen, further discussion or questions on the motion?
I just think, look after those funds and see if we can get some grant funds to come in.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
You've got three months to work on it. All right. Any other questions, comments? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
And it passes four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is, is Warren Dixon here tonight on the, thank you, Warren?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I appreciate you having me tonight. I'm Warren Dixon, representing the Friends of the Patterson Cottage in Liberty. We're requesting fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in strategic planning funds to help us purchase materials needed to display artifacts in the Liberty Heritage Museum. The Friends are in the process of creating the Liberty Heritage Museum by remodeling the old Liberty Hardware Building. While remodeling, we were hit by two unexpected expenses. The first was a new HVAC system. The hardware store had a heating unit that hung down from the ceiling. It turned out to be totally inadequate to heat the museum, plus it created a site barrier and was a safety hazard. Someone slightly taller than David would probably bump his head on it. But it was it was inadequate to heat the museum. So we installed a new HVAC system at a cost of sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Secondly, we hadn't planned on doing any intermediate, any immediate remodeling to the upstairs, which has a completely separate entrance from the street. But some of the windows proved faulty, and were allowing birds, other critters, and rain to enter the building. We ended up with dead birds downstairs in the museum and were forced to replace the twenty-one windows at a cost of twelve thousand dollars. These added expect, these added unexpected expenses of over twenty-eight thousand dollars has forced us to seek additional funds to partially pay for materials needed to display artifacts, such as display cases, signage, mannequins, and other items noted in our application. We feel that this request pertains to strategic planning goals of well-being. A1, retaining and attracting residents and visitors. D1, targeting and attracting visitors and encouraging them to spend more time and money in Randolph County. And E1, preserving and improving our county's rich historical resources. I think will aid in tourism a lot on that side of the county. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
So you're, the Friends, the Friends of the Patterson Cottage are making up the difference?
Yes, that's right.
In the total?
We're having fundraisers and fundraising drives.
Now, I would remind Commissioners and the public, the strategic planning money has been used to to promote development and the history of the county and recreation. It's actually the funds that comes from the lease of the landfill that we get from Waste Management every year. We use that and spread it all around the communities in the county. And that's the request before us is for use of strategic planning funds.
Ms. Chairman, I think that's the most information in a packet that we've had for that size of request. So I appreciate. So I appreciate, Mr. Dixon, you going in and putting all that together. We appreciate it. And there are pictures in there. I think it's, I'm familiar with that. It was a hardware store from 25, 30 years ago. And it looks, looks good in there. Appreciate the work that you've done. And it's hopefully going to be a little bit of an anchor there in Liberty to enhance the tourism, especially with the Liberty Showcase and other things that are happening in Liberty. So, Mr. Chairman, if.
No way.
You.
I just want to say that I appreciate getting the newsletter and being able to, you know, hear other historic things, you know, in the area and learning more about what's going on. That's a way to keep us, you know, keep it before us and to help educate us. So I really do appreciate you going to the trouble to mail those. Good.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the request for funding by Friends of the Historic Patterson Cottage Museum, Inc. and the associated budget amendment.
Second. I have a motion, second by Commissioner Kidd. Further discussion, questions? Those in favor of the motion to approve, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. And it is approved. Thank you, Warren.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, next item is the corporate extension positions. Kenny Sharon.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the time for this consideration. Back in September 2021, I brought to you two positions that were vitally needed in our county. One was a local food and community food systems position and the other was a digital literacy and skills agent position. I proposed at that time using ARPA funds to pay for those positions. As we started working through the ARPA funds and that was a new federal program that this county got the federal money from ARPA funds, we found some hitches in the way that those funds could be used and the subcontract that needed to be awarded to NC State University through the Corporate Extension Service. And it virtually became unattainable to meet those contract agreements. Whereas these positions are still vitally needed in the county, I'm proposing tonight that we move those positions to county budgeted positions reoccurring as we move forward in those vital areas in our county. Currently, there are 12% of residents in Randolph County that serve from food access issues and 21% of children live in poverty. Sophie Farlow, who's here, who's our local foods agent, she's standing at the back there. She is doing outstanding jobs, helping farmers connect with markets, helping people connect with local, healthy, local, fresh food. As we move into the food family and farm food and family education center, we'll be adding the food hub. It's a way that farmers can sell up their market and earn more money by selling food right here in Randolph County. Also involved with that food hub, we'll be able to help with the way we structure, providing fresh local food to those who are food insecure. So it's going to be a vital part of our program moving forward. The next position is the digital literacy and skills position. There's recently been a study released by the National Skills Coalition. It's called Closing the Digital Skill Divide. That study states that every, 92% of all jobs require some type of digital skills, meaning the ability to use computers. About three quarters of people have those skills, but there's still a lot of room to make up with getting people those skills that are needed. The digital literacy and skills agent will help our Randolph County residents of all ages gain those digital skills to be able to earn, learn or be well in Randolph County. This county will be a leader in North Carolina if we add this position in this, through these budgeted funds. I was just at a conference this past week where this topic was talked about. As you know, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners has decided this is the issue of the year, about the broadband and infrastructure and digital skills and learning how to use the infrastructure that's going to be put out there. I think by putting this position in place, we'll make Randolph County a leader in North Carolina with this, this move also. That's what I propose and Will provided the budget adjustments and the figures there. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, this, it is, I mentioned discussions we've already had.
Right.
The issue now is changing the funding.
From ARPA to county budgeted positions.
So these were temporary positions that we provided through the ARPA.
Right. That, that was going to run out when the ARPA funding ran out, yes.
And now they're permanent? Or is that.
That's what I proposed, yes.
Ken, I guess it's kind of a question for Will. And looking at the two budget ordinances, the lower one there where it talks about coronavirus grant project ordinance, what's that change? Is that, is that saying there's some money left, but we're going to stop using that money and use general fund money?
That's correct. The original request was for three years. And so the big numbers there under the ARPA fund, the coronavirus fund was basically reverse what you approved as a three-year, multi-year project. And the 90 some thousand was the cost that we anticipate for this current year.
This current year.
To cover those. He did not have a digital skills person very long.
Very long, right. Where that.
We haven't had that kind of cost that's incurred in the current fiscal year, but.
We're going to.
This is just going to cover from the conception of the project.
Are we a year into the positions or two?
They started in July this past year, so we're.
And we planned it for three.
Right.
And we're stopping, the ask is that we stop with that three-year plan and just go to permanent and put the coronavirus money back into.
It goes into contingency. It's up to the board to decide. And most of what we've considered is those water and sewer projects.
Right.
Are we doing both budget amendments?
Yes, sir, I think it's kind of a one thing.
One thing.
You know, you're making a decision to cancel the ARPA project and include those positions in the general fund with that funding.
As we move forward in our next budget year, which is coming up, we're working on, we'll, we'll include those positions in our new budget year. It's helped us plan for that coming up. This money is only approving from this point for going forward to the, to the final part of this budget year.
Right.
Other questions?
I'll just make a comment. I know Sophie's been working hard and appreciate her work on the Piggamet Tribe Regional Food Council. She serves on that. And there's a need here in the community for that type of service and not only for the residents, but also our farmers who are maybe small and don't have the capability to provide something, to provide an institutional type user. But this connecting them with our many farmers markets. And I know she's done some work there.
Yes.
I think, I know out at Liberty, they're looking to get some help out there too. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the funding sources for local community food systems agent and the digital literacy and skills agent and approve the associated budget amendments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Heywood, further discussion or questions? Those in favor of the motion to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Item D is a update on the Farmer Fire Tax District. Amy.
Good evening. You know, as you know, at your February meeting, you set a public hearing for your April meeting on the abolishment of the current Farmer Fire Service District and the creation of a new identical district without the current 15 cent cap. State law requires that a notice of that hearing be mailed to the owners of real and personal property in the district for weeks in advance of the hearing. Letters were mailed to the owners of the other districts that you set the, the public hearings for, but a pre mailing check of the letters for the Farmer District revealed that there were irregularities in the personal property list that we received. The county is able to generate its own list of owners of real property, but since we don't bill for personal property taxes now, we're, we get that list from the state, from the Division of Motor Vehicles. And when Tammy Smith in our tax department was conducting a pre-check of, you know, spot check of all these letters, she discovered that they had inadvertently provided us with two copies of the list for the Coleridge ERIC District, but she, they had labeled one of them for Farmer and had not provided us with the Farmer list. So I'm just asking that you postpone. I prepared a resolution in your packet and I'm asking that you pass that resolution, rescheduling the public hearing for the Farmer District for your May meeting so that we may properly notify people.
Everyone understand the issue here? All right, do I have a motion to move the Farmer public hearing to, from April to commissioners meeting first Monday of May?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. And it is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. The next item is to set up the opioid settlement funding application meeting on March 27th of '23. How, you want to speak to that?
This will be, as we've talked in the past and we talked at the planning retreat of the commissioners, this will be the time when the, a committee that has been appointed to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on allocation of opioid settlement funds first round with some of the agencies that have made applications to the county. We've stressed right from the beginning that the opioid settlement and those funds are probably some of the most restrictive funds that I've seen in a long time. And we have an excellent program of evaluation that's been set up. And on the 27th, at that special meeting, the board will have presentation made to you on recommendations on agencies to receive some of the opioid settlement funds at that time.
What's the time?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. All right, I have a motion to set the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. And we meet on March 27th at 6:00 PM. Will that be in the operations center?
Uh, here, it'd be here.
Here, in this courtroom. All right.
Good morning.
Do you have anything? Any commissioner have any report tonight? Anything you want to bring up? Okay, hearing done, then that completes our business session tonight. And we're going to go back to the issue of revaluation. And I know we have some speakers signed up and we're going to have Will, our finance officer, to make a little presentation tonight, kind of where we are, how the process will, will go forward. And we have some other statistics to share with you. And then we'll hear from, hear from the public. So with that, Will? You can follow his presentation on the screen.
Guys, I'll just remind everybody, obviously, some people are saying they can't hear you. Just the best you can, just try to speak clearly and loudly into the microphones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to take a moment to go over how the current reappraisal process and the numbers that come from that affect the budget process. Just thought that would be useful to start the conversation tonight. So as you all know, the property tax levy is the largest revenue source we have in our budget. So state law requires us to, to look at that carefully. It's always based upon current values. There's two main components to the tax base. One is real estate, land, which there's plenty of vacant land out there. There's residential, there's commercial, there's industrial. So that's the real estate and that's what has been reappraised here lately. The other part to the tax base is personal property, business equipment, motor vehicles, what's utility infrastructure, which is the gas lines and the railroads and things like that. And then things like farm equipment. So the personal property, like vehicles, is valued at current values every year. It's easy to value that. The equipment, you start off with your historical cost and it gets depreciated. The real estate value, values stay fixed for a period of time, but it's, you know, complicated process and you don't do that every year. State law requires you to do a revaluation of your real property at least every eight years. And several years ago, the commissioners decided to try to avoid sticker shock, that we would go from eight to four. Real estate market this past year didn't really help us much with, with that. But so that's the tax base. So we're in the reappraisal process for our real estate. North Carolina general statutes, when it talks about the budget, it refers to a revenue neutral tax rate. When we go through this process, we have to do a calculation. The tax value is just a piece of the tax levy. And this, there's a formula in here in how you calculate your revenue neutral tax rate. That's to create the information that this board needs and the public needs to know. Based on this new valuation, you're going to have a new tax rate. What is it, what's that rate need to be to give you about the same amount of money that you have in your current levy? That doesn't tie the board's hands, just like any other year. They're going to evaluate what services are needed and set the tax rate during the budget process. So how does that calculation work? And these are just round numbers. They're not indicative of our value. But just for ease, I started off with the last revaluation. Let's just say it's $10 billion. If you have 1% growth each year, you go from $10 billion to 10.1, 10.2, 10.3 over, over that four-year cycle. So that's an average of 1% average growth. And then you have a number of $13 billion for the revaluation currently. So let's just use those numbers. The first step is to take the current valuation, which I said was, it had gone from $10 billion to 10.3. And I used our current tax rate, which is 6327. That was a tax rate that was our revenue neutral rate back the last time we did a revaluation, 2019, 20. And this board maintained that revenue neutral tax rate during the whole four-year cycle. In this calculation, you know, using that tax rate and that 10.3 billion evaluation, the estimated levy that we are going to collect this year would be $72 million. So what tax rate would get us $72 billion, $72 million with the new $13 billion valuation? And the first step is to calculate that. And that's in the center there, 55.71. But the state statute says you can add to that, that growth rate that you've seen, so you don't lose that. So in the case of my example, it's a 1%. So you take the 5571 that was initially calculated and multiply that with the additional 1%. And that gets you that 5627. So you're lowering the tax rate in this example from 6327 to 5627, so a 7th cent tax decrease. So that's how this works in the process. It's part of the budget process. This board will meet in June to discuss the budget. And that's when. This board will meet in June to discuss the budget and that's when the decision will be made on what the tax rate is. I would hope to have the revenue neutral, uh, calculations completed fairly soon, but, um, you know, have to figure out what the full levy is for this current year and we're still in the middle of it.
Yeah. So these, the, as Will mentioned, these are not factual numbers. These are to tell you how the process works. Our process so far would show a little, little less, more of a cut than that. So that's what we're working on right now. Th- this is just how the process would work. In other words, if we had never had revaluation this year, we would have had some growth in our tax rate, in our tax base, I'm sorry. We would have had some growth in that tax base just by new development, additions, whatever. So that will be figured in the process. As Will mentioned, four years ago, we set it at revenue neutral. We haven't actually had a tax increase here in about eight years. This board takes its work very seriously. We have built a new school. We've made a significant addition at Ashboro High School, a renovation there also, and ongoing work at the detention center because of, as you've heard some part here tonight, uh, the increase in inmates and the requirements to separate those inmates. We did all that without a tax increase because we did not go into debt till we paid off our old debt. And this board has been very conscientious in every bit of this. And we will do the same thing as we go through this process and as fair as, as we can be with it. I would give you some other, these, these are actual numbers or percentages. We had 3,436 property owners whose value either decreased or stayed the same. From 10% to 60% is 56,166 property owners or about 70% of the total with somewhere between 10% and a 60% growth. So then, then you've got 70 up to, uh, 100% or there was some that was more than 100%. Now, commissioners, we don't set values. That's not what we do. That takes the politics out of this process. If you think that there's an error in your value, you make an appointment with the Board of Equalization and Review. They, that is a board of our peers, your peers, taxpayers just like you are. There are no commissioners that sit on that. These are public, these are employees, these are people that work for local companies here. One is a Farm Bureau agent. Um, we, of course, we have a lot of farmland here in the county. And you make an appointment and tell why you think your value is wrong. And they make that decision. This board does not do that. David might go help somebody over in Liberty and I don't, I don't help anybody in Archdale or Trinity because this is to keep, keep it, the fair, the process fair. And that everybody goes through the same process if you want to contest your value and that's a part of the process. They'll start making appointments in April and they'll go every day and night of the week until they hear all, all the appeals. That's, that's the way the process works. Just a moment. So we will, we will start that. As I said, we don't, we don't set values. The process will set values and the Board of Equalization and Review will make decisions as to any potential changes, um, for that. We are under the machinery act and we are, my law's supposed to set the value at its fair market value. In layman's terms, what would a willing buyer and a willing seller agree? If it's, if it's not at arm's length, if, if you sell property to your brother or you, or, uh, father sells to their son, that's not considered at arm's length and it doesn't go into the, to setting that value. There's so many, um, issues and, and requirements and exceptions in this whole process. It is, it is not an easy process and we try to, to go about it a- as fairly as we can. I know, um, talked about a, uh, uh, the, uh, revenue neutral. I'm sure probably you know that Guilford County's rates went up probably more than ours did, ours did, and they, they didn't cut the tax rate a penny and generated millions of dollars of additional property tax revenue for the county. Greensboro didn't cut theirs. High Point cut it a couple of three cents. But we have, in all of our, and I've been through several, we've always used revenue neutral as our guiding point. So, um, with that, and I'm, I'm going to, those who signed up to speak and then, and then I'll get your questions. Is that okay? Thank you. Who do we have that signed up to speak?
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes.
State one thing.
You go right ahead.
One thing, uh, one thing that I've been asked more than once, um, how does the Toyota property acquisition up there, how's that figured into this when it comes to value that was, land was bought up there versus other land out in the county?
Well, and, and I know Deborah Hill is here, but the county, my def- the county looks like a checkerboard and it's the transactions that go in within each one of those squares that sets the change in value within that area. So any change in that value for the mega site would affect only that part of the county. Now, I think I'm correct, there were, um, prearranged percentages of payment for property over there. And that was not considered at arm's length, I believe is, is correct because it was, that's what the, that's what the folks were offered. Most of them took it, some got more than that. But that would, that would only affect that immediate part of the county.
Now, I think the people out here need to hear that. They need to know that that's not necessarily, uh, injected in the overall valuation.
I will say that that and, and other, we've had two major announcements in Archdale since, since January the 1st. All of that has generated interest in buying property. I, I've had a number of people that, uh, tell me that they've been approached by folks from all over the state, out of the state to, to buy their property. Some, some have elected to sell, some did not, but it, it, it has created all the development going on in the county has, um, there's close to 3,000 homes in the Archdale-Trenton community right now that's under construction. Um, and that has generated demand for property. So to that extent, um, that, that could affect property values within a particular area. So, any other questions? All right. Who, who's first?
Patricia Hall.
We're going to try to hold to the three minutes.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Think I'm nervous so I won't be three minutes, but, um, my name's Pat Hall and this is my husband, Richard. We reside in Ashboro in Randolph County and in Forest Ridge subdivision. There are a few of our neighbors here tonight. So I'm just here to voice my opposition to this new home assessment that we received last week. I understand a little bit about what you were saying, but, um, typically comps are used from the last 12 months for reassessment. And as we all know, last year was an anomaly in real estate. Homes were selling way over their value. We also know that within this year, home prices have started to fall due to the rise in interest rates and the rise in inflation. Last Thursday, an article came out from Inman News, and that's a well-respected real estate source, and it addressed this issue that for the first time in a decade, the median home price has started to decline. So my question is, why would you pick, when you could use another four years, why would you pick the highest year, the hottest bubble in real estate history for a new assessment that we're stuck with for four years? This could have been put off for another four years and, and I understand you said this would lower the sticker shock, but that's exactly what's happened now. And maybe appraisers for the tax department should have made adjustments to reflect current market conditions. And then what about the city rates? Well, I know that one time David Jeremiah stated that knowledge and wisdom work together and knowledge without wisdom brings failure. And I'm not sure that I see the wisdom and, and all of this at this moment reflecting on the high rates that we had last year. And 40 to 50% increase, I mean, we just moved here a year ago. We just bought our house a year ago. We were reassessed then, but to get a 40, 40 to 50% increase just feels wrong. It feels like price gouging and it feels very wrong. Dr. Sam Keith.
Hi, I'm Sam Keith. I live in Forest Ridge subdivision, Amanda Record, um, and I'm here.
Mike, uh.
Sorry. Six-four.
Again, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm saying this because I've had some people tell me that they can't hear on.
I know, I, I've complained, but I'm, on behalf of this board.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. So I live out in, uh, Forest Ridge subdivision and I've been here for a decade, was an E.R. doctor for a long time till last year. But when evaluations came out, it did not seem good. So I was like, okay, this is a problem. Um, let's see if it's something I can figure out. So try to think the white way through it and I always go by two things to start out with. Occam's razor, which is the simplest answer is usually the right one, and Hamel's razor, which says, do not contribute to malice that which can be explained by incompetence. Um, so I've had plenty of time over the last couple of days to go over some things and, you know, the average value of our neighborhood, um, a house went up 45%. Um, we have 19 empty lots within the neighborhood and the value of those, each one went up 95% exactly. That doesn't seem to meet with reality of what the situation is. You know, I've gone through and looked at the sales of the stuff in our neighborhood, in our adjacent neighborhood, in Old Town, as well as in Cedar Creek. Um, Old Town's va- Old Town's values went up between 3 to 20%, um, but some of their houses did lose value. Uh, for Cedar Creek, their value went up by around 30%. Um, and looking at their empty lots value compared to ours, some of their lots lost value. I know one of our neighbors has, uh, lot in our neigh- in, that doesn't have any road frontage. It has no ability to be built, um, and it went up 95%. One 10 yards away from it dropped in value by $2,000 because it was in this, uh, the subdivision. So, um, one of the big things I'm concerned about is the methodology of the assessors and the way that they perform their duties because it seems like a statistical anomaly for every single empty lot to be valued at exactly 195% of its prior value. That doesn't happen in actuality. That doesn't take into account the conditions of the lot. I have a lot right next to my house that is flooded every single day by the city in order to maintain the appropriate chlorination for our neighborhood and the adjacent neighborhoods. It's not buildable, but now it's twice the price of what it was last week. That's not reality. I don't believe that the assessors follow the NCDOR assessor handbook in finding appropriate values for the empty lots, nor do I think that they follow those, um, when evaluating the price of the houses. So far, I've only been able to do the valuations of my own neighborhood, but I'm going to work my way through the other ones, um, to look at the average value change. But these values do not appear to reflect what the value of a house and a value of a lot in Randolph County should be. Um, you know, if these values stands, I'm going to get hit with a $10,000 extra bill next year in taxes because we got city taxes and we got county taxes. That's not fun.
Dr. Key, that's your time.
Okay.
What, what was the subdivision, Dr. Key?
I'm Forest Ridge.
Forest Ridge subdivision.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Adcock.
I live in Archdale and, uh, I got your valuation the other week. And the valuation is $26,000 more than my property's worth. I just had it, uh, appraised last year. It appraised for 123 and then y'all got it at 148. Now, how did y'all come up with that?
Amen.
I'd like to know that.
If you have an appraisal.
Yes, sir.
You can take it to the E and R board with, and that's, that's, can be used.
Do what now?
If you have an appraisal, take it, get you an appointment with the E and R board.
He has it.
And give it.
Yeah. No, but it's not right. The, the, these tax people need to go home and take a long look at the mirror and decide if it's for the people of Randolph County or taxes.
Yes.
Benjamin Landreth.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Benjamin Landreth. I live in Archdale. I have in front of me my 21 real property tax, $162,900 rounded off. I have in front of me my new appraised property tax, $253,690. In my math, ru- roughly, that's $90,700 increase. I'm 73 years old, Navy veteran. Live on Social Security. I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding how the property value can go up that drastically.
Amen.
A few years ago, I had my swimming pool dug up and filled it up with dirt. I would think my property tax should have went down. I appreciate your time. Please consider our property taxes.
Where, where do you live, Mr.?
Uh, 317 Blair Drive, Archdale.
Blair Drive?
Yes. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm having trouble reading the last, last name, but the first name is Carol from Franklinville.
Carol. And what's your last name?
Campbell.
Campbell.
Yes.
Pull the, pull the mic down.
Pull it down?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a native here. I work really hard. Nothing's ever been given to me and I've acquired a lot of property just working hard for my children. I have had a 47% increase, y'all, 47% on each property. That adds up. Also, I have inherited an 80's model double wide on less than an acre of land. Just to give you an example of what's happening where I'm at, I'm close to the Toyota place, okay? It is now $100,000 for this double wide on less than an acre of land. It don't have road frontage, there's no outbuildings, the house is dilapidated. Who are they looking at? If my mama was still living there, how is she going to pay for that? She's on disability when she was alive. Her last years of her life was disability. She would have lost her home. She had had 40 years. This is not fair. People on disability can't afford it. I'm a working person. I work hard. I've not asked y'all for anything. I don't get Medicaid, food. I don't get Medicaid, food stamps. I work hard. But y'all are killing me. There's no way that I can budget in this amount. There's no way. I'm at a point in my life I want to retire. This isn't going to happen. And I want to leave something for my kids. Y'all have really got to help us out here. This isn't right. Not for us people who've really worked hard, not for the elderly, not for the disabled. It's not fair. So please consider helping us here. Please consider this. We need a little bit of help. Forty-seven percent, a hundred thousand dollars on a dilapidated home. That's not right. Who are they looking at? That's it. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
The person who signed up, I'm having another difficulty reading the name. They live on Troy Smith Road, fifty-three thirty-four.
My name's Lance Shafley, and she said I live on Troy Smith Road. I have two things. One is pro. I'd like to thank the commissioners for leaving that statue up front where it belongs. Three hundred thousand Southern soldiers died defending the South against Northern aggression, and that's exactly, they deserve their due respect, and that's exactly where this needs to stay. Second of all, you are not going to like this one. My taxes went up forty-four point seven percent. I live on Troy Smith Road, right across from that abomination that has ruined that whole area, and it's sickening. And I will say one thing, I'm not much of a public speaker, believe me, but I hate saying this, and I don't know how you people can stand up there and look at these people out in the crowd. Because you represent Toyota. You do not represent the citizens of Randolph County.
Lauren Turley. Lauren Turley. Going once. Okay, done. Barry Betts.
Several of you know me as a housing expert. All the years I've lived here in Randolph County, it's been over forty years, and my, my housing business went out of business after two thousand and eight. In two thousand and thirteen, I had to close it down because housing prices were so depressed when young couples came to me for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it would appraise for seventy-five thousand dollars because of what happened in the economy. Someone said it perfectly, we're in a bubble. We're using a bubble to come up with these values. So I live in a manufactured home. Mine went up sixty-seven percent. So I know what these people are feeling, but I'm very quickly going to talk to you about business. I'm a business owner, and I've been told that my businesses, my family businesses, small family businesses are being taxed on the income level this year. They're going to try and determine my income based off of what they think by calling around on the phone what businesses like mine make. He said I could bring three years of my personal taxes to dispute that. I don't have to give the government my taxes. Why are you taxing our businesses on the income level? If you're going to do it, you've got to do it to every business. You cherry picked my businesses. One went up two hundred and sixty percent. One went up a hundred and seventy-one percent. And I've got several others that have gone up in the hundreds of percent. You're going to kill the small business person. I cannot afford this. You know what? I owe the bank for my things. I don't owe, I don't own them. So you know who's going to pay for it? If, if I can stay in business, you're going to pay for it. I have to go up on my prices. I can't absorb this. You're talking tens and tens of thousands of dollars, and you're doing it to only select businesses. If you're going to go to the income approach, you've got to do it across the board, at the same time be fair to all of us. You can't just do it to me and a few small others that you cherry picked. The tax department cherry picked us as low-hanging fruit, and we're going to go after you, and we're going to take your money from you, and we're going to strip your family. Now, I don't live in some big expensive house. I live in a manufactured home that went up sixty-seven percent. One of the first people here that was doing public business said the value goes down over time. I hadn't seen that. Mine has gone up successfully every year I've owned it in Randolph County. So I'm saying that you need to look at this whole process that you're going through. It's not fair. It's not right, and you cannot go after certain businesses because it was an anomaly. In my type of business, we actually thrived during this time where people were buying and selling houses at unbelievable prices.
Mr. Betts, that's your time.
Thank you.
Walter Krasinski.
My name is Walter. You guys have pretty much nailed all my nails. Only thing I could add is them guys probably got the same shock letter. That was like, you ever do that to keep yourself awake while you're driving? There should have been a paragraph behind that damn paper because we actually make taxes handed over.
Mr. Krasinski, can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thanks.
We generate the taxes risk-free to the government. We take all the risk, business-wise, living, whatever. Look how many people are in drugs and all that. But anyways, the government gets the money, no risk. Now, you guys do have, I understand, you guys do pretty good budgeting. Maybe a little explanation would help with that little paragraph behind saying, you know, what the heck? There's not, God don't know what the rate's going to be in June time, but the rate will have to be recalibrated because we're not going to all of a sudden get two, four hundred million more dollars in property value tax collected. It's going to all recalibrate. Maybe it'll be instead of a dollar forty-one for residential property, maybe it'll be a dollar twenty-two, maybe a dollar twenty-five cents. Nobody knows that right now. You guys don't know either. So anyways, that's pretty much, I got some good points, too.
Thank you, Walter.
You're welcome.
God bless Ross Perot, I guess. So I'm going to try to explain the screen right quick. In my hand, I got a dollar. This is what you said my house was worth yesterday. This is what they said my house was worth yesterday. They want ten percent. That is a dime. Today, they say it's worth two dollars, but they changed the rate down to five percent. They still take the dime, is what he was really trying to explain on that screen that apparently nobody's getting. I think this is actually a premature argument until we actually see what the rates are going to be. Like you said, you don't even know what the rates are going to be. You don't even know what you need yet. Have they made their budget requests yet, the departments? You don't know if it's going up a nickel, a dime, a penny, twenty, thirty dollars. You don't even know yet. So that's all I would like to say. And other than that, for anybody to attack you, I was eight years old when you got elected. If, I'm sorry, if you don't like Randolph County, you don't like Daryl Frye, you definitely need to move out of Randolph County because he's the one that developed it. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Shaun.
Ryan Snipes.
Yes, my name is Ryan Snipes. I live in Sophia, and I agree with the last speaker. I don't know his name. I think everybody misunderstands the property value and the property tax, but I think everyone has pretty much decided their property's going up fifty percent, and if I divide the rate by fifty, that's point three one, I was never very good at math, so point three one something, then adjusted for growth. So if we see a rate that's five or greater, I think the commissioners need to question it. As a matter of fact, it says to be rather than to seem. So be a representative of the people. That's all I got to say.
Mike Brinkley.
Well, my name's Mike Brinkley. I know a couple of you fellows on this here board for thirty, forty years. So here we go. All right, first off, I want to know how that taxes can be done on low-income properties whenever they're not even taken into account for the middle and the high-class properties. They are not on the same tax rate, and yes, there is a, see, I believe the Ms. Deborah Hill and one of her assessors of five, that's how many they've got, five, for doing all this stuff. Now, there's three ones, and I can't remember what to tell me. But at any rate, you cannot take a house that is put together by two trailers in an income, low-income neighborhood and compare it to a neighborhood that is stick-built. Can't do it. For a quick example, last October, November, October four by eight was five dollars a board. This week, there's two twenty-five at Lowe's. Now, y'all want to adjust for the stuff that's going on at this time? Well, adjust. It's half the price of what it was no more than three months ago. Now, in two more months, it might drop even lower before this blank, blank, blank Biden come into effect. Now, now, October four by eight was ninety-six cent. Now, whenever he got in, man, this went to hell, point-blank. Now, if you want to adjust, you adjust for the time that it is, not for what it was last year. Now, that's fair. Y'all talking fair this, fair that. I know everybody got an assessment. Some of you people are incorrect by thinking that these fellows are getting a tax break. They don't. They don't. Now, point-blank, we all need to stick together, and we need to make this happen and make all this stuff correct. Now, I spoke with one of the five today over at Deborah Hill's office at the Tax Department who was a part of actually doing this program. And I'm going to tell you, the boy didn't wake up that morning and say, I'm going to raise every single taxes in Randolph County. He didn't do that. No, he was going by what these computers was telling him. All right? That's his job. Now, you cannot point-blank take a low-income area that is built on sand rock and compare it to a area that is built on either red dirt or black dirt and is all stick-built. Can't do it. Now, you cannot take a two double wide, two single wides that's put together, that's got a frame around it, and charge it as the same price as this stick-built house. Now, if some idiot over here wants to go and spend two hundred damn thousand dollars on a trailer, that's his stupidity, point-blank. Now, I ain't that stupid, and I know a couple of people on this here panel very close for a long time, and they're definitely not that damn dumb.
Mr. Brinkley, that's your, that's your three minutes.
I get it, but hey, these people great, I know some of you very well great because I know some of you. But let's make this right, and let's keep it correct. Let's stand together, and let's do what has to be done.
Thank you, Mike. He's going to leave. He's not going to stay and talk to me.
He's, he's out. That's it. That's it.
I had a question.
Can you come up to the microphone? Can you come up to the microphone?
The reason for that is the fact that people in the TV land out there can't hear somebody back there.
Give us your name.
I'm Justin York. I live in Cedar Falls. Your chart up there doesn't show how y'all are going to adjust the fire tax rate that we're imposed every year, because these fire departments out here, I guarantee you, they're salivating over the increase they're thinking they're going to get. What is your plan for that?
You bring up a good point, and everybody that pays the fire tax lives in these fire districts, you need to make sure you get heard, because I can tell you, they, they...
I see a lot of reckless spending fixing to happen. Even if you adjust that tax rate, I see a lot of reckless spending fixing to happen.
Well, y'all, I'm telling you, we, we have...
Mr. York? Mr. York? Could you please come sign in?
You, you did make a good point, because we, we had a, we had a fire department that asked for a tax increase last year, and not one person from that fire district showed up to complain about it. I went to a board meeting, and they had a public hearing right here, and not one person said anything about it.
I'll have to say that I was invited to a meeting by a fire department out in the county two weeks ago. They had worked to publicize it. They had their board there. They were there. They had chairs set up. They had information. They had a PowerPoint, and the only person who came was me.
Six months ago, same thing. No one came.
No one came.
Yeah. But can you point out that we went to Randolph County four years ago?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize. I just had surgery on my knee. I'm a commissioner at the town of Franklinville, and I've had a lot of phone calls regarding whether or not the city tax is going to go up in regards to this county assessment that we recently got. Now, mine went up seventy thousand four hundred and twenty dollars from last year. My neighbor, unfortunately, is disabled, retired, and his wife is a schoolteacher, which we all know they make a ton of money every year. He's had to sell his Kubota last year just to make his taxes. The year before, he sold his tractor. This year, he sold his truck. This is the kind of individuals that unfortunately are being taxed, in my opinion, an erroneous amount of taxes. Now, in comparison from last year to this year, seventy thousand dollars, even for me, that's a lot of money, and I'm retired myself also. I feel for the people in this county that are really going to be forced to move out. I hate to see that happen. I left Florida, retired from Florida because of taxes. I came here to Randolph County. I did my assessment. I did my due diligence. I did my background investigation. I talked to my neighbors to make sure it was okay to live in that neighborhood, and I enjoy living in Randolph County. I enjoy living in Franklinville so much that I ran for commission, and I don't know why, but I got elected. I've been here nine years now. I appreciate the job that you all do. The only thing I'm asking you is to please consider all these folks out here that are fixed income, disabled, older, elderly, can't move out of their homes, can't afford to live in a nursing home or anything else, and then they get taxed, like myself, seventy, eighty, ninety thousand, even a hundred percent of what they were taxed last year. I just want you to please consider that, not to mention the fire tax. Thank you so much.
I, I, I think four years ago, the fire departments, most of them went revenue-neutral.
I asked you to sign that. Thank you.
All but one went revenue-neutral, but I can tell you, there's, there's a lot of discussion going on within the fire departments. As you heard, we, we're having the public hearing on Farmer, and we've had public hearings on all of them, and there's been, there's been very little interest shown in that whole process. Yes, sir, Mr. Dooty.
I had a thought. Was it in the newspaper when Wospeed and Toyota, when they got their final tax break to come in and do business here? Do we know what that is? Was it announced?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, hopefully.
What's your name? Give us your name.
Joe Milliken from Randallman. Hopefully, I won't get them too riled up. I've been dealing with Randolph County since 1972. They very seldom go the way that we want them to go. But I asked all you guys to respect these people up here in the front. I come down here three or four times a year and listen to stuff that's going on in the county. I like to come and listen and get views. And I think we all should do that. I think we all should come down occasionally and listen to what they're going through. This is bad times right now. It's bad timing. There's nothing that they can do about this. You know, apparently, the four years are up, and so it's time to readjust. I asked all of you, if you, when it comes in January, if you feel your stuff is not right, come down here and go before them, and they'll talk with you. And I have done this before. I was working for some property for a lady one time, and she was poor and didn't have much money. I thought they overvalued her property. I came down and talked to them with the lady. I got the lady, she was about 70, 80 years old. We come down and talk to them, and they adjusted it. So I'm sure that the situation that we're in this year, there'll be a lot of adjustment going on, because, you know, it's just, it's bad timing. You know, things are really, just like one of the gentlemen said, things are really, evaluations are really high, because, you know, the house building that's went on in the last two or three years, there's a shortage of houses and this and that and the other. And, you know, something, you know, talk to your commissioners, I sell property, and I work with these people occasionally on trying to get a lot or two to sell property. And people's always asking me, you know, "Why is your property so high? Why is your property so high?" I try to sell one and two-acre lots. And them lots are like $25,000. Okay? In my vision, the reason them lots are so high is because there's not enough of them. Okay? The people come and complain about the people, you know, of giving someone, giving me a place to do lots. And so, you know, they have to consider that. They consider the people coming and complaining. And so, you know, everything inflates everything, you know? Let's, we're in bad times right now. I asked everyone I talked to, to, you know, "Let's try to use some vision and work together." The worst thing we've got going on for us right now, we can't work together. We've got 50% over here on this side, and we've got 50% over here on this side, and no one can work together. So let's, let's everyone think about everything. When stuff comes up, let's think about it. And I was down here at a meeting like this...
Mr. Milliken, that's your time.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I gotta get this in. I was down here at a meeting like this on the Toyota thing, and I was the only one here that was for it. I'd like to let all these guys know. My daughter-in-law, she applied for a job with Toyota, and she's in conversation of possibly getting one of them jobs with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
If, come on up.
Good evening. My name's Michael Parton. Didn't really plan on coming today, but I just felt I wanted to say some stuff. I learned that you guys really don't control the evaluation, more so the tax rate, which is great, but that seems more of a Band-Aid fix, even if it goes down. About 41% increase on my taxes. My main concern is a generational thing, you know? The property I bought, 2014, great deal, worked out fine for me, but I don't feel that my son will be able to afford that same kind of property that I was able to a couple of years ago. I don't know how it works. I've never been here before. I'm probably the youngest person in the room. But whatever y'all guys can do to think about Randolph County in the future, that's what I'm concerned about. I was born here, raised here. My son's born here, he's gonna be raised here. I just hope that we can work together to make Randolph County grow, but keep it affordable. That's about all I gotta say, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you mind signing up there?
She's got it.
All right, folks. Yes, sir.
My name's Josh Langley. After just studying this slide that you have up here, I would say there's a whole lot better way of presenting it to the county people. Instead of dropping the tax rate and increasing the property value, why wouldn't you just, I mean, increase the property value of 1% and leave the tax rate alone? I mean, to make it very simple across the board. I feel like that this is gonna open up doors to where you can creep the value of the .5571 up very small in return, and eventually get it back to the .6327. Why not just leave it where it's at and increase the property value by 1% to 5%, to keep it very simple math for everybody in here? I would say you'd have way less people in here fighting this if you was to contend, just basically keep the same rate and increase the property value by 1% to 5% instead of adjusting two things, keep the same denominator. I mean, I really feel like that would be a way better solution, instead of jacking everything up and then creeping up the new tax rate.
Thank you, Josh.
Sir?
My name is Chuck Lepred. I live at 1990 Lewis Thomas Road. The state of North Carolina was fine enough to build a road through the middle of my farm, and so there went a lot of tax money right there with this road. But that's beside the point. Point is, I bought a piece of property two years and three months ago. Paid $100,000 for it. I don't understand how it could increase to $176,002 years and three months. I think y'all need to look at who's doing your evaluation and see if they know what in the devil they're talking about. I mean, that's a big increase. Now, who wants to buy it from me up here? I'll be glad to sell it to you. At the appraised value.
Sir? Sir?
Chuck?
Can you sign in, please?
I feel like we're attacking the fire departments for no reason.
Yeah, let's, we're not gonna do any repeats tonight, so thank you, Mr. Walker, but we've got, we're gonna give everybody the opportunity to speak, but we're not gonna do any repeats.
My name's Rob Steiner. I'm a business owner. I just kinda wanna go back to the business side of this, because I think that's an area that's gonna hit everyone. I guess the question I have is, because I got assessed like 100, I think it's like 140% increase, but it's off my potential gross income. And the first thing I said to my wife was, "Don't we pay federal and state taxes on actual income? Not my potential?" I mean, to me, I just didn't understand that, because it'd be like, okay, I got a job, and your potential bonus is 50%. And then the government says, "Well, we're gonna tax you on that potential, even though you only got 20." So I just didn't understand that. So I think that's important for these people out here, because as the gentleman said before, that's just, is eventually gonna get passed on to the consumer, because that's what just happens, right? You're gonna, you're gonna get a certain amount of investment back, so you just pass that on to the consumer. So I think that's the hidden nugget in this, that I'm not sure about the assessor, where they came off and said, "Okay, we're gonna have potential gross income as your, now as your income instead of actual income." So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Not a great speaker. I'm an old lady. I'm actually an accountant.
What's your name?
Carol Lobesser. I've done numbers, so I get the whole numbers game. You can play with numbers all you want. You said something earlier about, you know, "Take your assessment," because my assessment is way up. I have an appraisal, and I went down to the Tax Department with my appraisal. They laughed at me, okay? They kinda basically said, "They know what the number is. They know what the value is. We've got a nice house because we have sweat equity. We built it ourselves, and we're gonna be penalized for that. And whether or not we stay in Randolph County, only time will tell. Again, I'm an old lady. We're about retiring. Our country needs leadership. Our world needs leadership. Our government, our financial markets need leadership. All I'm asking is Randolph County needs leadership. Can you do something and look at what's happened and try to make some sort of amends and calm down and really get a sense of rationale in what's happening here? Because it's just, it's kinda nuts. I mean, if you really are a numbers person, the numbers don't add up. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hold on. I have a question, I guess. Can I ask you a question?
Back at the podium.
Anyway, so you said you had an appraisal? You have an appraisal?
I went down, before I came here, I was not planning on attending this meeting. And I got my letter, and I looked at my letter and said, "Wow, that's really high." So I wrote down four things that's happening in my area that affect the value of my house. Again, we built our house. We bought woods. It was nothing, okay? So sweat equity. So I went out with our tractor, and we did this, and now, so much for sweat equity, okay? You're gonna pay for it. You might as well just, you know, do nothing. But I went down with appraisal from January 22, January 20th, '22. And I went down there, and I said, you know, they said, "You wanna drop it off?" My nice little package with my four comments, my quarry, my trailer parks, my chicken houses, you know, and my appraisal, and I think you overvalued my property. And the guy, you know, she says, "Do you wanna talk to somebody? You wanna just drop it off?" I said, "Well, no, I'll talk to somebody." And it just was not respectful. It wasn't like, you know what? "Oh, we value your property. We value your opinion." It was like, "No, we know what it's worth. You don't matter, okay? Well, please, we need some leadership. We need somebody. Put, show us that you care and that you really do care about Randolph County, and you wanna see what happens to us, okay? We'd have enough of it in government. We have wars overseas. We have a border mess. Please, keep our Randolph County safe." It was the one thing we had that meant something, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Ma'am?
Ma'am.
Carol, Mr. Lobesser, you can appeal to the E and R Board. You can appeal to the Board of Equalization Review. That's...
Absolutely.
That's what...
That's actually the only thing that you can do.
I wasn't planning on speaking. My name's Kristy Corin. I am the last survivor of my immediate family, and I recently inherited our 18-acre farm, which was started by my grandfather, who died when I was three years old. In doing some cleaning, I found one of his paychecks, OD Corin. He made 17 and 1/2 cent an hour. We've had four generations grow up on that land, and my property went from $247,000 to $390,000. What are you doing? You better be ready to throw more money for that suboxone that you just funded, because there's gonna be a lot of homeless people. There's gonna be a lot of drug addicts. Stand up for your family members. That farm was built through blood, sweat, and tears. And even today, I had to learn to drive a tractor at 50 years old. I go out and I cut wood with a chainsaw just about every day. I do things that most women my age wouldn't do. I've been putting insulation under the house. You know what? The house was built in the 70s by my father for under $30,000, with two other people's help. And he worked a full-time job while he did it, and he did it in three months. You don't find people willing to work like that anymore. And when you do, what are you, what are you giving them? You're giving them bills they can't afford to pay anymore. Where is our county pride? Where is our family pride? I gave up a very lucrative job in the trash industry to take care of my mother while she was dying. And I'm an old lady too now, and I haven't got my career back where it needs to be. And every time I need to pay somebody to come help me do something, they want $50 or more an hour, while I make $20 an hour. It's not adding up. I am going to die on that property, one way or another, whether your taxes get paid or not. And I am leaving something behind to my nieces and my great-nieces. And they will never, ever have to tie themselves to some male who's gonna beat them and berate them, because they're always gonna have family land they can come and live on. That is my dream. That is the only dream I have, and I will die till I fulfill it.
Ma'am? Thank you.
All right.
My name's Stephen Manus. I live at 4550 Woodfern Road. I know a couple of commissioners pretty well, and thank a lot of you guys. There's just one thing that I'm wanting to get some clarity on as a farmer. I haven't heard anybody address this situation. We all are up in arms over everything else, but we haven't talked about this. Some of the business people have talked about how they're able to pass along the cost to the end consumer. But the farmer can't do that. We carry our cows to Silver City. We get paid whatever the market's paying. A cow brings the same thing today that it bought in 2000, $1.50 a pound. Cows don't get the, we can't pass that on to the end consumer, and people who grow chickens are on structured contracts for three, five, seven years, or however long. We can't pass any increases in to our product, so it ends up coming out of our family budget. So when I got sticker shock for the first year of raising chickens, and I found out I'm gonna have about a $900 or $1,000 a month property tax bill, you can understand why I make a few phone calls, trying to get to the bottom of figuring out exactly what that's for, you know? I mean, we're gonna pay a lot of money. I'd like to know at least, how are we supposed to compensate things? And I can see what some of the money goes for, but, you know, it's just, that's an awful lot to throw on a farmer who has no way of adjusting that property tax increase out. That's all I had to say.
Mr. Manus does bring up a good point. We still have, we always call it farm-deferred or current-use values, that's in effect on your, I think it has to be 10 acres or more, not counting your resident. And I think they allow one acre for the house, but 10 acres, and you can qualify for current-use values. And that's, that's another part of the whole process. There's so much to it. But Board of Equalization Review will answer your questions, and we'll get through it. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melody Gwynn. I just have a few questions for you. I know that North Carolina law requires the eight-year reappraisals at least. When did we decide to do the four years?
We were on five, and then we went to four.
Okay.
This cycle, I think, was our first at four.
Okay. And is that decided by you all?
I'm sorry, we went from six to four.
Okay.
And when you get, I'm gonna, I have another point I wanna make on that, but go ahead.
Okay. And was that decided, that you all decided to move it down? So could you not have decided to delay it a year this time, since we knew we were in an inflation period that was causing the housing... um, an inflation period that was causing the housing values to jump way up? We knew that wasn't gonna be sustainable, that those values were gonna drop. So could that have been voted on and delayed for a year?
At some point. Now, another part of this process, several years ago, Duke Energy, Duke Power then sued Guilford County. It was a, they were doing it not as a class action, but for all public utilities. Now, we've gone over the years from eight years to six to four. Now, the state of North Carolina values all public utility property every single year. State does. We don't. That's Duke Energy, Piedmont Natural Gas, Randolph Electric, railroads. All of those are public utilities.
Spectrum.
Yeah. Spectrum, the cable folks. Duke Energy sued Guilford County that you don't, you don't tax your people, you don't change property values at that time, eight years, and they're changing ours every single year. And the courts ruled in favor of Duke Energy. And a result of that lawsuit and the settlement was every first, third, and seventh year of a cycle, if our sales ratio exceeds a certain percentage, we have to give tax relief to all the public utilities. So we go to five years, that, we've already had the one, and our sale, the sales assessment ratio is, when you sell your property, all of that transaction goes to the register deeds office, and they take what you sell it for plus what's just on the tax books. And when that ratio gets, is it 10% well? Yep. Above 10%, then we have to give tax relief.
Well, I, I think the citizens need tax relief more than the utility companies.
I agree, but that's, that's money that they're gonna take.
Yeah.
It has to be made up somewhere.
Okay.
But that's, that's a part of the process. As I said, there's so many.
Okay. I feel like, I feel like we saw this coming, that the, that these housing prices were rising, and that was not gonna be, uh, feasible, that that was not gonna continue for any length of time. So I think there should have been a meeting to call for that to be delayed by one year. And I don't think, you know, a passed lawsuit from a utility company should have influenced that. Because now that we're past that point, there's no going back. Is there any way to go back and say, "Hey, we don't have to use that reappraisal?" Or no?
No.
No. So really, our only, the only thing you can do right now is just to lower that tax rate, correct? Which is not gonna bring our bills down. I know my bill is still gonna go up considerably, 'cause I've already done the math. If, and I was using a hypothetical number of if, if you decreased it by around 10%, I don't know what you're gonna actually end up doing. So now that it wasn't delayed, we're kinda just stuck here with the only recourse is hoping that that rate comes down enough, but we're still gonna be paying quite a bit more. So maybe in the future, if that happens again, it would be a great idea to look at that.
Thank you.
Ahead of time. Thank you for your time.
Now, we, we still don't know what, what that, what that rate will be when we get to June. That's in our, yes, ma'am, it'll all be done publicly.
There's a series of meetings.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be several meetings in that process. Yes. Come ahead. We're gonna, we're gonna wrap up in just a minute, folks, if you wanna.
Uh, I am Pat McGrath. I live on South Park Street for the past 20-some years. Uh, I am more involved with the city council, and while I agree with everything everybody's saying about these appraisals, um, I am, I am more concerned with the responsibility of spending our tax money. And, um, I have been actively involved with the city council for a long time because we were not getting the services that we were supposed to have. Park Street, my little four-block area was overrun with drug dealers, uh, homeless in the park, shootings at the park, uh, carjacking up at the old Coeur Tribune parking lot, drug house right there within a block of mine fights all the time. I was told to quit abusing 911, and so I started going, I met with the mayor at the park. Fraser Park was overgrown, disgusting. And, uh, so I, I have really resolved that issue myself, and I showed myself at the city council before they would even pay attention to me. And then the next day, it was cleared up. And they have renovated Fraser Park, and I hate to take the credit for it, but if I hadn't shown myself, that place would still be disgusting. So now I am talking about the irresponsible spending of our tax money. There's one thing to raise the taxes, but we're not getting the service we need for the value that we deserve. And, um, and you'll have to excuse me, I didn't bring my glasses because I didn't think I was gonna do anything. In 2015, Greensboro, Randolph County spent $10 million to purchase 1,825 acres, uh, to begin the mega site. And this effectively removed that property from our tax rolls. We promised them to get Toyota, uh, $435 million payable over 20 years incentive for them to build, to build there. And then we also had a mega site in Chatham County. And now there's discussion about Randolph County running water lines to that county site, uh, in conjunction with the North Carolina Department of Commer, of Commerce. In 2015, Ashboro City and Randolph County donated $500,000 to aid in the construction of the salt box on Salisbury, which incorporated the Acme McCrory Office Building, effectively removing that property from the tax rolls. Uh, during the YMCA capital campaign, Randolph County and Ashboro City pledged a donation of $500,000 to this nonprofit, non-taxpaying entity. The pledge was promptly removed when, uh, the many tax-paying fitness businesses complained that their tax money should not be spent to further another entity to compete about, against them.
Mrs. McGrath?
And run them out of business.
Mrs. McGrath, that's your time.
Okay.
Ma'am, the Toyota property's still in the, it's.
I'm sorry, what?
It's still on the tax rolls. The Toyota property, they pay taxes.
Oh, I know they do. I'm not saying they're, I'm saying the money, you don't know the money that the Ashboro City has spent on the mega site, on the Sportsplex, on these McCrory apartment buildings. And this is stuff that I'm paying for and I will never use, but they complained like hell when they had to spend a little money on fixing up the most iconic, very first park in downtown Ashboro.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. McGrath.
You are responsible for being stewards of our tax money.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
You sure are. All right. We're gonna wrap it up. Is there any other business to come before this board tonight? Oh, oh, okay. All right. Thank all of you, and this is just the start of a process, folks. And, uh, we'll keep working at it through the, through the end of June, and if you file appeals, that's gonna go on through probably till this fall, depending on how many appeals are filed. I encourage you, if you have a question, you think it's not right, file an appeal. Go, go raise your issues. And we'll be here, we have, all of our meetings are public, and we'll go through this process together. Is there a motion?
No move.
Have a second to motion?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.